We have five items tonight for consideration on our consent agenda. This is an easy one this week, and I think we want to tackle the donation first. The donation from the Wilmington Education Foundation grants for the amount of 5,364.
Yes, and our thanks to the Wilmington Education Foundation. 4,364,000 of it are specifically for educator exploration grants. You have a list of those different grants before you. Some exciting stuff, sending a couple of our administrators to Finland to learn about Finnish schools, which are high-performing schools by international standards. Sending one of our arts teacher to Australia to learn about Aboriginal art, and another one of our middle school teachers to learn the geography of several cities in Italy. So, it's exciting stuff that they're going to come back and report to you on in the fall. In addition, they also awarded $1,000 in miscellaneous grant funding, and that included to, the applicant was Mrs. Mahan, but on behalf of the Special Education Department to fund attendance of staff at our Universal Design for Learning, not ours, but a Universal Design for Learning presenters academy. And we were able to send three staff members to that at elementary, middle school, and high school, which is really, really awesome for the district. And also for the C T L at the high school for foreign languages, Mr. Brown, and for the Math La Proficiency Academy. So, we thank WEF for their contributions to the district.
Absolutely. All right, so could I get a motion to accept Mr. Mueller's second? Mrs. Bonish, all those in favor of accepting this donation? I cut you off there, Mr. Mueller.
That's okay.
Okay, I think the next item we can take up is we have an approval for an out-of-state field trip for Ireland, Scotland, and England to take place in April of 2017. Anything you should know?
Other than the fact that I would like to attend?
Me too, it sounds like a great trip.
I have my clothes.
Are you going to go on that trip?
Yes.
Excellent, we can expect a good report afterwards, right?
My class advisor, Ms. Cassin, is advising itself.
Awesome.
Yeah, so this is for next year, over April vacation, and you can see from the agenda and itinerary what the goals of the trip are. Similar to the trip, I think that was done this past year, a couple of past years with respect to learning about world history and being able to tour different historic sites in those countries.
Excellent, great. I will take a motion to approve the trip to Ireland, Scotland, and England for April 2017. Mr. Talbot, second, Mr. Bjork, all those in favor? Excellent, thank you. All right, I think the next couple of items we can group together. We have the approval of minutes for May 11th regular session, and we have warrant articles G 422, 423, and R 223. Could I get a motion to approve those? Mrs. Bonish, second, Mrs. Burns, all those in? Thank you, we've all came. And lastly, we have warrants sped 23 and sped 24. Could I have a motion to approve those two warrants, please? Mrs. Kane, Mr. Talbot, thank you, all those in? Thank you, and we have two abstentions, Mr. Bjork and Mrs. Burns. Okay, thank you. Next up, we have our student representative report. Dina.
Hello.
Hello.
Today, I will update you all on our events that took place and that will take place. Last Thursday, May 19th sadly, was the last day of classes for the seniors, they left, and this week is senior exams week. So, obviously, they're coming back, they're saying hello to us, but they are done with school. And May 19th, 20th, and 21st were the days of the W H S Drama Guild's production of Cats. Yesterday, May 24th, was the high school and eighth grades collaborative choral concert. And now for upcoming events. Tomorrow, Thursday, will be the underclassmen awards ceremony. Next Tuesday and Wednesday will be the freshman science MCAS. And next Tuesday will be the meeting for the mentor program for the class of 2017 and 2018, like a guideline what mentor program is about, if you want to join, there's many ways of getting involved. Cause I'm tight. And Thursday, June 2nd, next Thursday, will be a Make a Statement Day t-shirt party after school for club members and club advisors of the W H S. It's not just one club, it's a collaborative thing that all clubs are doing. And what we will do is we're getting together after school in the cafeteria, and we are making individualized t-shirts with a joke, quote, or saying, basically making a statement through t-shirts. And the t-shirts will be worn on Make a Statement Day on June 9th. And this event is organized by Ms. Estrada, an English teacher, and the sad advisor as well. And this allows students to express themselves through positive messages by wearing their t-shirts. She got this idea from Needham High School, where everyone, the students and the staffs, made t-shirts and wore them. So, I mean, there wasn't, due to time constraints and, you know, telling everybody, not everyone could be involved this year, but she did make an effort to have a collaborative club project for every club to get involved and make the t-shirts and making it like, you know, a little snapshot of how it will look when maybe the whole school might do it next year. So, she wanted to introduce this new tradition to the W H S. And concluding my report is my quote, and this person might not be well-known amongst you all, but it, her stage name is Superwoman, but her YouTube name is Lilly Singh. She's a very positive person, motivational speaker, and all she is, she spreads love, she spreads positivity, and that's, that's her message, that if she can make people feel happy, she's happy. And this is her quote from her, "Love what you do more than you're scared of what other people think."
That's great. Thank you very much for your report and for sharing that quote with us. Now, our superintendent's report.
Thank you. I wanted to start by just debriefing on our Behavioral Health Provider Fair, which was on May 12th. We had over 100 attendees at that fair, and we had some really positive feedback, and I just wanted to share a couple of pieces of feedback that we received from that. So, Dear Mary, I just wanted to take a second to thank you. My husband and I attended the Behavioral Health Fair last week, and were truly impressed by all the hard work and effort put into it. We attended the stress management breakout session and picked up some great pointers for handling our stress and helping the kids cope with theirs as well. It was nice to see our child's guidance counselor in attendance, it was a great way to start a conversation with our child about anxiety and how to get help in school without the other children knowing. Thank you for all that you do and for truly making a difference in this community, was one piece. Another piece, "Good morning, I wanted to let you know that I thought last night was great. As a parent, I've got so many resources, and I am going to pursue some of them. As an educator, I learned about ways to help families that I didn't know about. This is such a great start to something really important and special for this town. I'm so grateful for the leadership in this district, thanks for all you do." And finally, one of my favorites. "Hi, Mr. Lai, just wanted to let you know that at the session I attended, I met another family that has a child with very similar issues as our child. I have become, I have become friends with his mother, and having someone else to talk to who is going through the same thing as me is such a relief. Also, our child has become friends with their child also, and I hope their friendship grows and they can support each other." Our child support each other. So, my point of this email is that if you didn't have the mental health fair, I would have never known or been able to connect with this family. I'm so thankful that my husband and I decided to go, thank you. So, we had some really nice feedback, and like I said, I think I was very touched with their willingness to provide that feedback, and while we didn't necessarily have thousands of attendees, I think that the hundred or so attendees really got a lot out of the fair. So, we thank all of our vendors who were there and all those who attended. Next, today, I don't typically dress this way for school committee meetings, but I was at the Special Olympics event today, and it was a really awesome event to attend. We went with six students from Wilmington High School, and the hope is that next year we have students from all of our schools attending the event. We were at Lawrence, and each of the students participated in seven different events, they had a fantastic time, and they each won medals. They give out those medals, so they're all obviously winners to us. So, it was a great event, and we look forward to growing our participation in that event. And finally, in terms of events that Dina didn't mention, scholarship night on June 3rd at 6:30, and graduation on June 5th at 2:00 P. M.
Great, thank you very much. I'll just say that I had a chance to attend the Behavioral Health Resource Fair, and the one item that really stood out for me was the presentation of In Plain Sight. I don't know how many people got a chance to see that, but it's basically a bedroom scene, a very messy bedroom scene. It looks a little familiar, but it was quite enlightening, and it was all the different ways that people can be deceptive and where they're placing contraband. A little bit scary, a little bit eye-opening, but I think I learned a few things also, so it's not going to get much past me, hopefully. All right, so moving right along this evening. Mrs. Burns, sorry.
I just wanted to comment, attending that behavioral fair, you can't find, it's so difficult to get everything together, but those resources are invaluable, and I know that you and I discussed and spoke about how next year it'll only grow in other areas that I think would be helpful resources for parents with regards to aligning them up. Insurance was a topic, but I have to say, I was very impressed with the vendors that came out and seeing our CPAC committee there as well, in support of what they do for us here in the district with educating parents. I commend you and your team in orchestrating it, and I look forward, I think it can only grow as you progress each year, so I want to thank you for that.
Yeah, thanks. And obviously, we have several members of our Behavioral Health Task Force here, but this was really their effort. The idea was conceived, dropped it on them, they ran with it. They were a little reluctant at first, given the timeline, but special thanks especially to Christine McMiniman and Erin Burke, who really took on a yeoman's share with respect to logistics and getting all the sessions settled out and attending to those details. But the entire committee was really, really engaged in this, and I was very excited that it was such a great event.
I think there was some ideas that some of the breakout sessions could be built into a parent education night in the future, so I think there was quite a bit of interest there.
For sure.
Great, okay, any other comments? Did I miss anybody? No? Okay, so under new business, this gave us a beautiful segue. Behavioral Health Force, Behavioral Health Task Force presentation.
Thank you. Yeah, and I'd like to start just by acknowledging those folks here that are part of the Behavioral Health Task Force, and I'm actually going to ask them to stand. We have, you know, Doreen Crowe, who is our Director of Health Services, Chris Phillips, nope, stay up, stand up. Assistant Principal from the high school, Mary Hood, our Administrator of Special Ed, Christine McMiniman, Principal of the North, Christine Murray, Guidance Counselor at the Shawshine, but soon to be Adjustment Counselor at the Wildwood and Boutwell Early Childhood Center, Kristen Walsh, kindergarten teacher at the Boutwell, but now taking over as the interim Director of the Boutwell. I think we got everyone, yeah. So, thank you for being here. Another 15 or 16 that weren't able to be here, but it's been a really great group to work with. So, we just wanted to kind of go through what we've been up to for the 2015-16 year. Last year, we developed our vision, mission statement, vision and mission statement, as well as our core beliefs, and this is our vision statement, and I think, you know, ensuring that safe, nurturing, inclusive environment is really the key to what we're trying to accomplish. And our mission, collaborating with all of the different constituents and stakeholders, really to promote social, emotional, and physical health and well-being of students. And our core beliefs, again, really wanting all students and families to feel safe, to be respected, and to feel socially and emotionally supported and nurturing learning environment. And additionally, to making sure that our teachers are empowered with the strategies and the skills and the tools that they need to help students be successful. We worked on a working definition of behavioral health. It is a term that is not necessarily in the everyday vernacular, lots of folks talk about mental health, but in terms of behavioral health, a little bit of a broader definition, which is that it's really an interdisciplinary approach that promotes the well-being of students and supports their ability to deal with challenges in everyday life. So, as part of our work, we divided up into several working groups. We have a group that's focused on providing and encouraging this framework of multi-tiered systems of support. Most specifically, on the behavioral side, is developing and planning for the implementation of the school-wide positive behavioral supports. Did a presentation to the committee a few weeks ago about that, and there is a working group that's been behind that planning process. Developing behavioral interventions, and again, we had a presentation a few weeks ago from the West Intermediate School about collaborative and proactive solutions. As we told you then, that that implementation was so successful that we actually expanded the pilot to the Shawshine Elementary School, as well as a sixth grade team at Wilmington Middle School, and we've seen some really great results. There was a working group that focused on social, emotional learning and developing or researching different curriculum that we might implement, and we brought to, they brought to me a recommendation, and we discussed piloting responsive classroom, which we're doing at the Early Childhood Center next year, and staff development and parent education. We've had several different opportunities culminating in the Behavioral Health Provider Fair that we were just discussing. So, with respect to school-wide positive behavior supports for this current year, we did some training for administrator. We've asked schools to identify school leadership teams, and there's been some focus on providing those tiered systems of support. Starting to develop school-wide norms and values, which is sort of the first step of implementing positive behavioral supports. And some initial discussions of what the behavioral expectations would be that were linked to those norms. For next year, one of the most important things we will do is identify the data that we will collect and monitor to track the success of P B I S. We will also develop behavioral matrices that identify minor and major behaviors and how those are dealt with. Are they dealt with in the classroom? Do they result in a disciplinary referral? Were there different ways that we handle the things that we encounter? We also have money in the budget for next year to do some coaching, so we will use outside consultants to provide coaching at four of our eight schools with implementation of P B I S and training for the members of the leadership teams that are promoting and implementing P B I S in those schools. Terms of CPS, as you know, I just mentioned, training and coaching for staff at West, Shawshine, and Wilmington Middle School, and piloting the implementation at those schools. We had a presentation to staff by Ross Green, some of you were at that presentation, and we have one staff member right now who is certified as a CPS coach. For next year, we're going to continue to train and coach staff at additional schools at additional grade levels, support the profession, the practice, the infusion of the practice of CPS at the West and the Shawshine and the Middle School to other teams and grade levels. We have already reached out to Dr. Green, he has a book coming out in August that is specifically for parents, and we hope to have him out here in September to be able to do a presentation to parents. And we have an additional staff member who applied for a WEF grant to go to the same week-long institute that the current person who has been trained, so that we would then have two certified CPS coaches in the district. Responsive classroom, again, we had a social, emotional learning working group that researched a whole number of S E L curricula. They narrowed their choices down to open circle, responsive classroom. They visited schools who were using both of that so that they could see that in action, and the work group recommended that we implement responsive classroom. So, we are piloting that at our early childhood centers, and most of our pre-school and kindergarten teachers will be participating in a four-day training in June from the 21st, I should say 21st to the 24th of June, in responsive classroom. For next year, we're looking to train additional teachers at the primary grade levels, support the early childhood teachers in implementing responsive classroom, and also looking at schedules to make sure that there is time in the schedule to effectively implement those practices within the schedule for 2017-18. Staff development, we had staff participate in Middle Sex Partnership for Youth Mental Health series, as well as the School Climate Workshop series. Administrators received some training in P B I S. We had Dr. Green come and present to staff, as well as do some coaching. We have five staff members, and actually, I should add, there's a sixth staff member who was, who was part of the care staff, who Mrs. Noonan sent off to get trained as well. So, we actually now have six staff members who can deliver the mental health first aid training. We have 51 staff members registered for youth mental health first aid training. The first of those trainings actually started this week, so we're excited about that, and we had our Behavioral Health Provider Fair. There are also trainings already set up for June for staff, and there are trainings set up for September for parents and school community members, and we've gotten a lot of interest in that. So, for next year, we're going to continue doing training and coaching for staff in PBS and CPS. We are planning a mental health workshop series for parents that would offer conferences or workshops over the course of the entire school year, and to set that schedule at the beginning of the year so that parents and families know exactly what's coming next year. Talked about the Dr. Ross Green presentation already. Parenting workshops, I will say that we actually had the Shawshine Elementary School, Lisa King, organized with the Village Parenting, Teresa Wiggins, who is, was one of our providers at the fair, but has also done some training for students and staff on mindfulness. She offered a parent workshop yesterday at the Shawshine, and there's another one on the 31st, and they had 23 people come. It was called intentional parenting, parenting, and really good feedback, so we want to continue to offer those types of workshops for our parents. Continue to train staff, parents, and community members in the mental health first aid, and our second annual, we hope, Behavioral Health Provider Fair. Again, lots of lessons learned from the Behavioral Health Fair this year that we hope to just use that to build upon what we've already started.
Is there anyone from the Behavioral Health Task Force in the audience that has anything they'd like to add or enlighten us with? I kind of put you on the spot, but.
I think that you could probably try to move to the microphone.
Yes, please.
I think that you could probably say that, you know, obviously, there were multi-working groups, and somehow, they all sort of worked together like gears, and as Mary said, the vision for the fair came about, and everybody kind of did their own thing, and somehow it came together, and people were able to benefit. So, that was just really powerful as a group, but each working group worked so diligently together that we actually accomplished a lot in separation, even though we were in the same room a lot of the time, we were all doing our own specific tasks. So, it really was probably a blueprint for how a large committee can work well.
Great, excellent. Now, I'll open it up to questions and comments from the school committee first, and then certainly, if there's anyone in the audience, I'll address, I'll give you a chance as well. Okay, anyone from school committee that would like to? Mrs. Burns?
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Do you know how many schools, how, when you're rolling up the CPS to the additional schools next year, have you, how, which specific school's been targeted as to bringing this into it, or is that still up in the air?
Well, I mean, for this year, we chose the Shawshine and the sixth grade due to what we saw as an elevated need for behavioral concern. So, I think that will continue to look at the data and make those decisions based on where we have concerns, based on what we're seeing for need for behavioral interventions.
When do you think you might have that information?
I think for next year, I think a big focus will be to continue to spread the work at the West, the Shawshine, the Boutwell, and also the Middle School, and to perhaps get the whole sixth grade team, because we've got now students coming up from the intermediate schools who are going to be used to having these conversations about challenging behaviors, and so we certainly don't want to take a different tact with those students. So, I think that's going to be, that's going to be a primary focus, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Bjork?
I'd just like to say that when you came to Wilmington, this is one of the first things you mentioned as a priority, and I'm just so impressed with how much progress we've made in this regard, and I thank everybody who's spent so much time on it.
Comments, questions?
I have one question. Can you give us an example, youth mental health first aid?
Yep.
What would that look like? Just a, just an example.
In training? I'm not a trainer, but I am, look, I am, have asked that we, as an administrative team, leadership team, be trained, because I think it's important. The analogy that is used for mental health first aid is, it is to mental health what CPR is to cardiac care. So, when you're in a crisis, when you have a cardiac event, if you're trained in CPR, you're there to just basically be a lifeline for a short period of time to make, address a critical acute need, and similarly, with youth mental health first aid, if a student is having an issue or crisis, or you happen to be the person that they're comfortable speaking to, that you can be that bridge to the longer-term solution. So, you're the acute care provider, you're not intent, you're not a counselor, you're not a psychologist, but you can address that need and get them to help steer them in the right direction so that, you know, God forbid, any, any crisis, if you will, is averted.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions, comments from the school committee? No? Is there anybody in the audience that wanted to make a comment or question this presentation we just heard on behavioral health? No? Okay, great, okay, thank you very much. The next item of business on our agenda is the Inclusion Task Force presentation.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
I just want to recognize both Mrs. Mahan, as well as Mrs. Hood, for their role as co-chairs of the Inclusion Task Force, and Jen will be making this presentation on the work that's been done this past year.
Great.
Thanks so much for having me tonight, may I borrow the? Please. So, the Inclusion Task Force is in its first year. Mary and I worked together to develop the task force at the beginning of this past school year as a way to start to begin to look at inclusive practices and what we need to do here in Wilmington to adopt some of those.
Go down. I'm going to go the old-fashioned thing.
So, as a task force, we created our mission statement, which is our mission as the Wilmington Public Schools Inclusion Task Force is to identify steps for schools to successfully implement inclusion through improvements in school culture, general education practices, and service delivery. We will define inclusion and inclusive schools with a set of standards and indicators that are measurable, reasonable, concise, and flexible. We will develop the capacity of all staff through professional development, which will shift the culture. We will ensure that our youngest students with disabilities begin their educational journey in quality, inclusive classrooms, and continue to be supported inclusively through graduation. These are the members of our task force. I'm not going to read everybody's names, but we have such a nice representation from all across the district. We have everybody from district leaders to educational assistants. We have everybody from district leaders to educational assistants, elementary school principals, assistant principals from the high school, parent representatives, which we have two here this evening. And we also have team chair people and school psychologists. So it was a really nice, it's a really nice representation of people across the district. So just a really brief summary of what we've been doing. So this is our first year, so we're just getting started. I feel a little nervous that I just went after Behavioral Health Task Force. I probably should have asked to go first, but it's all right. So we have monthly meetings. We started in September. We've met every single month through till last Monday was our final meeting for the school year. And everybody came to every, almost every single meeting, even on Monday when it was hot. We had declining attendance, but it was good. And everybody was so committed and enthusiastic. And that was one of the charges for every meeting on the agenda was to bring your ideas, creativity and enthusiasm. And folks really, really did that and stayed with us as we got started. We did work with a consultant, his name is Chris, and he introduced us to the logic model, which is a model basically that identifies what's the task and the steps we're going to take to get there. So for somebody like me, that was a really nice way to kind of slow me down because I'm the type that we're at A, let's get to C, we can figure out what happens in the middle. So he was really a nice calming presence that said, no, we're going to identify what we need to do and take our steps to get there. The participants on the task force, we used a lot of different protocols. I know many of you have probably heard about our PLC work that we've been doing. So we use the protocols to guide our meetings and our discussions. In our very first meeting, we did a protocol called Back to the Future. And what it is essentially is the team outlined what our present is, where we were and where we want to get to. And the future's looking really good. So we're going to, we're going to get there slow and steady. We also read a variety of articles and had many discussions. We did a lot of small group work and really talked through the different practices and principles that are out there. We gave the members homework. Each, at the end of each meeting, everybody had a homework assignment. And one of the biggest ones was researching different inclusive practice models. And everybody was so thoughtful in their information they brought back to the group. You know, all different types of practices, different videos that showed children with, you know, many special needs, just being included in a variety of ways. And it looks different for everybody, but at the end, every video just always gave you chills. You're like, this is really nice. And at the end, after all of their hard work this year, we arrived at the following best practices. Universal design of learning, positive behavioral interventions of support and socially emotional learning. So the nice thing is there's a lot of connections and overlap to what the Behavioral Health Task Force is doing. So I kind of pictured in my head that right now we're moving parallel with each other. And I have a feeling at some point we're going to intersect and join together. And that's just going to be even more powerful for the students of Wilmington. This is our plan, our loose plan for next year. The first and foremost, the members of the task force, we talked about doing site visits. There's many districts around us that have a similar demographic that have already adopted inclusive practices and are using them. So we've identified a few. We're going to organize some visits. We tried for this time of year, but I've got a lot of, you know, it's May. No, thank you. Nobody was being unkind, but it's May and June. It's very difficult to have, you know, 20 something people show up at your doorstep and say, hey, we're here. Can we look around? So that will happen in the fall. We're going to continue with our monthly meetings. And again, that was something the folks, they gave us some really nice positive feedback on Monday that they enjoyed coming to the meetings. They wanted to see more of it happen. A couple of people actually wrote, could we meet more often? So, you know, we can try and accommodate that, I would think. But we also introduced the Inclusion Task Force members to the Inclusive Practices Guide that's set out by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And the conversation on Monday was, oh, my gosh, this is terrific. How do we get the word out? So we talked about how it's a commitment at the district level to get the word out to general and special educators, everybody really, you know, administrative staff, administrative assistants, educational assistants, custodians, cafeteria workers. This is something that everybody is going to have to be a part of to make it work. And then the other thing that we're looking for for next year is just coming up with some recommendations of inclusive practices that the Wilmington Public Schools can adopt. The important piece of that is that we will need to do a lot of professional development. We will need to train our staff. We will need to put our staff at ease. This is a daunting, daunting task. It's not one that we can put our heads on our pillow tonight, wake up tomorrow and be like, oh, hey, good. So we're going to work through it. But like I said, the task force is committed and everybody's looking forward to next year. Next year, as am I. And then I hope this works, but we have a very short video. It's one of the videos that we watched as part of our work together. It's actually a school in New Hampshire. And they have implemented PBIS as well. And they have this little girl, she's diagnosed with autism. She's nonverbal. She is fully included in her day. I'm just going to skip ahead to the. I don't know, can you hear that?
My philosophy is that social growth and learning how to engage with everyone in the world is just as important as learning your academics. And I have just felt that the kids have so many rewarding experiences just learning to accept and to understand and to support people that are different. We want her to be Tasha. And if Tasha is going to do her work at her desk or at a table or under the table or wherever, that's fine. If you're not willing to differentiate your instruction for the wide range of learners that you have, including students with autism, then you're not in the right profession. Yeah, she needs to be a much better teacher. Patience is a virtue. Everyone has strengths and weaknesses. And very often we learned things from Tasha that we wouldn't have learned had she not been in here. She amazed the class all the time.
Just want to let you know that we've never actually done this before, so we're kind of figuring it out as we go along. This is also a concert for, to hear some special piano playing. So you're going to hear some solos on the piano.
As a parent, I am worried about her, about how she will be and how she would be like socially, her development socially. Even if she still has autism, I think she can find happiness because I think she's a happy child. She's always expressing her feelings through music.
So it's videos like this that renew our commitment to developing inclusive practices. Thank you. That video gets me every time, I have to be honest.
One issue?
I was taking deep breaths. No, and that's part of our hope and our dream. And that's those, we've seen so many different videos like that throughout the course of the school year that they're inspiring. And I think they help kind of push our motivation to be successful.
Is there anyone from the Inclusion Task Force that's with you tonight?
So Mary Hood's here.
Hi, Mary.
Thank you. And Mrs. Kate O'Malley is here. She's one of our other members. And like I said, you saw the list, there's.
Sure, great. Okay, great. Anybody like to make any comments or ask questions or?
I'm looking forward to the future myself, so.
No, it looks pretty bright. Anybody else? Okay. Anyone from the audience tonight like to make a comment or questions the presentation? Not to put you on the spot. You are here. That's the first step.
I'm here too, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great. Okay, our next agenda item, the Facilities Master Plan Consultants Presentation. I think we have a couple of gentlemen here from Herriman.
Yes, we do. We have Steve Cecil and Will Gatchel. If you guys want to sit over there, we've got a mic for y'all set up.
So our presentation is primarily analog and we have, we can project it.
Yeah, that's up to you. There's a, if you, if you needed my laptop, you can just unplug the HDMI and plug yours in if you, if you feel the need to, but we're fine with analog as well.
Okay.
The committee did receive the 11 by 17 paper that was distributed at the most recent Facility Master Plan Meeting, the Educational Facilities Alternatives.
Why don't you hand me the? Yes, why don't you hand me your? Very good. Grab all these things. Think this should work. Okay, let's see what may come up here.
So the handout you have is from the last, the last meeting. The options we've actually provided some maps too.
Very good. So by way of introduction, the Herriman team has been working with the town to create a Facilities Master Plan on a townwide basis. And a Facilities Master Plan takes a look over a period of time, approximately 20 years. And we are focusing on all, almost all of the municipal facilities that the town owns and manages. And looking at this in a way that by understanding the conditions of the buildings, the needs of the future, a, an organized process of decision-making for where investment should occur, how to improve things, in some cases reorganize or move different pieces around can be done in a, an organized fashion by, by thinking through what exists and what should or can occur. So as part of that process, we are, we're looking simultaneously at the schools, particularly the lower level schools, because the middle school and high school are in good shape. And a lot of investment has occurred. But when we take a look at the pre-K through grade five levels, there's a different, there's a different set of circumstances with older schools and questions about how that, that part of the overall school system should proceed. We've been working with a committee that has representatives of various departments, including of course your superintendent. And it's been attended by members of the school committee at various meetings over time. We're meeting about on a monthly basis. The first phases of the project, we're, we're making sure that we assemble the facts correctly. In terms of all the buildings, we've been through all of the, the pre-K through grade five schools. We've been through DPW, Town Hall, Library, make, on and on, creating an inventory of what the building conditions are relative to what might be needed to be addressed in the future. So that has been accomplished. We're going to be obviously focusing on the school side of things. And as far as the schools are concerned, there's a different level of analysis, a whole different type of analysis that needs to be accomplished. Taking a look at the school buildings and the enrollment and programs that you're running to just try to understand how good of fit there is between the building facilities and the educational programs that you have within them. There are a number of measures and standards that get to be used. In the case of Massachusetts, we have a pretty thorough set of standards that we use.
Through the MSBA, we've benchmarked all the program analysis, which is noteworthy that we've reviewed the, all six pre-K through fifth grade buildings operationally through the Public Works Group essentially. So went through with architects and engineers and, and then programmatically with the principals, going through the buildings, room by room, understanding what, what's being taught where. And then basically creating a list of, of current, current status, benchmarking against Wilmington Public Schools classroom standards and then again against the MSBA standards to, to see how, what's going on today compares to what an ideal situation from the state of Massachusetts, you know, would, would want to see.
So to give you a, a quick overview of the results of that, some of this will seem fairly obvious to you, but we need to use all these measures to really look at it. Effectively, you've got six schools that are operating at the, at the pre-K through five level. And their group is pre-K and K. Of course, you've got two each of the pre-K and K. The first grades, one through three in two schools and grades four through five. And in taking a look at the schools Boutwell, Wildwood, Shawshene, Woburn Elementary, North and West Intermediate Schools, those schools are pretty well full as far as the way they're used today. There's some really tight places. There's a little bit of extra room, a little tiny bit. But pretty much if you add up all of the needs that you have for classroom space and other kinds of function space, what we call core elements like the library or cafeterias, if you could make this all one big school, just, we're not going to do that. But if you could, you'd say, well, gee, your school population sort of fits. You don't have a lot of extra room. But it's a little tighter here and a little bit looser here. But more or less, your overall space allocation is tight and, and you're filling that. And then what we've done is we've taken a look at projections in the future, both school, school enrollment projections that your department provides. But we've also benchmarked that against what the growth rates are expected to be within the town as a whole over a long period of time. And there's some good news here in that there is no population explosion that we can see in the future in terms of the population of school age kids. The other side of it is there's no real diminishment of school kids that are going to be appearing on the horizon as far as we can tell. They're going to be almost certainly, you know, small variations in, in particular age groups over time. You have a population where as other towns in Massachusetts, like greater Boston, a certain percentage of the school age children are going to non-public schools, alternative school circumstances. We don't have any reason to think that that, the percentage of, of children attending those other schools is going to shift significantly from where it is today. There are all kinds of reasons why people choose other, other school circumstances. It's pretty much steady as you go as you take a look at Wilmington and the school age kids as far as we can reasonably see over time. Overall, there are other changing needs within the town, which we're finding to be very interesting. We are. Overall, there are other changing needs within the town, which we're finding to be very interesting. We are an aging population and your town is, is having a significantly, a significant increase in senior population over time, which is fairly common in suburban communities around Boston, and other kinds of things which are going on. So, as we take a look at the schools as a whole, some of the schools are not in, certainly in terms of contemporary good conditions that we would like to see for schools that are at a high level of maintenance and completion. They vary in terms of, some of the schools are a little more tired than others, is a way of putting it. Having said that, the question then is, what do we do from where we are and how do we reinvest in the schools? Now, the school size that's, that you have, in the scale of elementary schools, is small. You have, if we take a look at the overall enrollment, which is similar to the capacity, remembering that it sort of fits, a little bit bigger, a little bit smaller. The early childhood centers are just a little below two hundred students in terms of their size and their capacity. The elementary schools, which are the one through three, of course, we've got three grades there and, and not surprisingly, that matches up with the larger buildings and their capacities and enrollments, which are similar, are around four hundred students. And if we take a look at the intermediate schools, which are just two grades, four and five, you're in the neighborhood of two hundred and fifty or two hundred and seventy-five to get a feel for what's going on. Now, the thing about efficient schools, when we talk about efficient schools, schools where the programming can be provided across a, a number of different classroom types, where the library gets to be well-used, where mentoring is occurring, where the overall proportion of the education space to the infrastructure of hallways and core space start to work, these days is more in the neighborhood of about six hundred students for kind of a school that people are finding to be more of a center point as far as overall school size. So, all of your schools are below the scale of what, if we were planning schools from fresh, we would be starting to normally look at that size to see if it fits. But another consideration that's important from an educational standpoint are the number of transitions. While towns do this, there's amazing so many different models for how to set up your, your, the transitions. Right now, a child going through your, your system has a transition after kindergarten, has a transition after grade three, and has this transition after grade five, which is a lot of movement and a lot of changes to undergo. And the educational models, by that I mean people who are looking at what's a good way to do things, are, tend to, they, the idea of transition, transitions are not a great part of a, an educational experience. It's okay. You want to have people grouped appropriately within the educational program, but there are some negative aspects of having so many transitions within a school system. So, again, if you were starting from scratch, the first models that people are looking at these days are larger schools and fewer transitions. I think, again, there's a kind of common sense reasoning behind that, but there's a lot of educational theory and programming and planning that, that our firm is involved in, that, that, that is behind those general observations.
Yeah, and if I could just jump in really quickly, well, there's a, a fairly healthy debate over maintaining smaller schools versus larger schools in terms of population and serving distinct neighborhoods. There really isn't a whole lot of debate in terms of the fact that many transitions are worse than less, you know, fewer transitions, and that to eliminate transitions, that mode trumps the smaller schools. So, growing, growing schools to a larger population as a mechanism to reduce the amount of transition, transitions in a child's progression from pre-K to twelve is always been found to, to be the, the best benefit because they, they don't get handed off by guidance counselors, teachers, and, and the support system that they come to know and then two years later have to walk away from to be introduced to a new one. So, so we're, we're looking at these ideas where we're looking at this, this kind of sweet spot of four hundred to six hundred student school options to be able to facilitate both operational efficiencies where you can start to consolidate gyms, cafeterias, you're not heating three buildings, you're heating two buildings, that sort of thing. Not necessarily massive amounts of dollar savings in the building itself, but, but a massive amount of efficiency gained operationally. And then also from program standpoint, with the larger population, you have, a- all of your specials are, are able to be supported. You know, your music, your math, and you, music, art, all these other programs that, as we saw with the integration of, and inclusion of different, different kids with special needs and so forth, start to really serve a much broader population really well once you start hitting a certain scale of school.
Again, so if we were to take a look at, if you had, to make up a, a, a kind of an analogy, if you had a school system that had six schools that made me five hundred or six hundred students, you'd have a lot of simple options in front of you. You could keep lots of transitions and keep them focused in different age groups. You could put together, within those schools, a more continuous program. A lot of school systems have the pre-K in kind of a separate early childhood center, that's my town in Dedham, that's what my daughter went through. And then, and then there's the elementary school that takes it through the fifth grade and then on to middle school, et cetera. And you could think about moving different pieces of the puzzle to just meet your educational program needs. The challenge for Wilmington is that you have a series of relatively small schools and it's not so clear how you would shift those if you want to change the, the, the model of the transitions and have smaller schools. Now, if, and when, I should say, when Wilmington takes its next steps in investing in the lower school levels, the funding associated with that and the approvals of those schools starts to need to meet state standards. There's nothing wrong necessarily with having smaller schools, but the schools, for example, if you have a library that's smaller than what the state would say is a good idea for an elementary school, it means typically you're, you having to absorb extra cost to cram more program into a smaller space. You have to adapt to a smaller area. And that's what you're doing today, is you're adapting your programs to a little, there's some cramped spaces and they're cramped in different ways in different schools. But if you were to say, aha, what, let's go ahead, and again, this is just a, an illustration, if you were to create a new school to replace one of your schools today, it would be bigger than what you have because some of the spaces would be considered insufficient, whether that be the cafeteria, in some cases, the library, some of the classrooms, they would grow from what you have today. Now, it wouldn't make a lot of sense from our point of view to say, why don't we just take all the schools and keep them pretty much the same and, and add, and, and start over again and make them a little bit bigger. What you really want to do is to think creatively about how the overall education program that you wish to have, to be best for the, for the, for the children of Wilmington, what that program looks like, and then go look at the schools and say, so what do we do about these schools and how would we move the pieces around? So, the, the, the alternatives, we're in the process of doing this with a bunch of the, with, with all the town facilities that are subject to some, some potential change in the future. And we've created some preliminary alternatives for discussion purposes to start thinking this through. What we're looking for is your help in consolidating the kinds of choices that you think might be reasonable. The next step in our process is to really dig in. What would it cost? How would this work? What are the implications of it? We've tried to put everything out on the table that you could reasonably imagine. We want you to help us say, which ones, or have we missed something? Or, we're never really going to do that, so don't spend the time and energy. Let's look at the things that we could really sensibly have. But we're trying to make sure that we're being thorough about this. So, the alternatives that we're going to show, and hopefully it'll come up again here in a second, because I think it'd be helpful for other people to be able to see this, are represented on this chart that we provided you with. And I'll explain a little bit what's involved. And then I will stop talking so that we can start listening to questions and see how you think this might evolve over time.
Well, Steve's pulling that up. We have some, some questions for you to, to consider. And one of them is, is just curiosity about this new facility, the high school, and has the, the opening of the high school and its, the, the, the community's engagement in this new facility created any epiphanies or changed your mind about the pre-K through fifth grade facilities and, and how they are, how they're set up now that you kind of are able to really experience, you know, kind of a, a completely current version of, of an educational facility?
Anybody like to take that one? Mrs. Burns, thank you.
I think, generally speaking, we've seen the impact of what transitions between schools have done to student achievement, especially in, between going from the Woburn to the north. And I know previous to Superintendent Delai's position here, that was something that we were focusing on, to find ways to smooth that transition so it doesn't get lost. Student achievement doesn't get lost because of the move to the schools. So, that is of great interest to myself. I have to say, in the schools that I, my children have attended, I think the town has done a bang-up job to sustain an aging infrastructure. And I believe in an article, I spoke about, two thousand thirteen out of Parade Magazine, it was stated that sixty percent, if I'm correct, of schools in this country are aging and obsolete. And I think something to keep in mind, as we did with the high school, is that education has taken a turn with how we educate our students now, that the spaces are undersized for the types of learning that we need to be able to offer our students, especially those that are differentiated. So, I think those are hot topics I am waiting to see, but I can't, I want to get the most bang for our bucks. We've been gracious enough to be able to build this building. And we know that the school system is just one of many other departments within our community that is looking to do better by. And, you know, respectfully, that, you know, being respectfully said, I would be interested in all alternatives that would make financial sense, that would not stop other departments from getting what their needs are. So, I guess that priority.
Yeah.
It's not just a one-sided, this is what we're looking for, because I think the, I attended one of the meetings, which I was very enlightened to, which was helpful. I think it is a bigger perspective and hearing those different priorities by different departments are instrumental in figuring out when and how.
Yeah. And I think, I think that's, by putting everything on the table in a way and thinking, one of the variables is time. You can accomplish a lot, but is it in three years or is it ten years? And if it's a ten-year or fifteen-year goal, what do you do first and how do you find that and lay that out over time? And I think the, as far as the town-wide facilities are concerned, there's the quality of the services and the quality of life that it provides in terms of the educational components. I think your school system has done a great job of working with aging infrastructure and can probably continue to do a good job. They won't stop doing a good job, but it makes it more difficult over time and it opens up new kinds of opportunities. So, the trick is, how do we get, where do we want to go? That's first of all, where do you want to go? And then how do you get there? And our job is to try to see how you can get there. So, we have these alternatives on the screen. And this computer that I have wants to rest all the time. We've never been able to figure it, so, figure it out, so I'll just wake it up if it goes to sleep again.
That's fine. I was also asking if you could make it a little bit bigger. Not only do we have an aging population, but we have aging eyesight.
Yeah, I think there's a little bit of.
At the top, where it says fifty-six percent.
That could be. That's a good idea.
Yeah, exactly. You may lose some of it. Yeah, just click on that.
Yeah, that's a little better. Thank you.
There you go. Perfect.
Much better.
I'll try our left eye now and see. So, and, and you may have to sort of understand this, I'll walk through it a little bit, by the way, we're describing it. But the fact of the matter is that if you, if you just, as I was saying, if you had big enough schools, you could rearrange what's in those, in those schools in all kinds of different ways. But you don't have so many choices for how you do that. There's also the geographic distribution of your schools. You have two schools in two different parts of town for each one of the different levels, and there's a convenience factor associated with that and an identity factor associated with that, that we are very sensitive to, which is why the map came up in the first place. So, if you were to say, okay, we're going to consolidate two, two of the schools and put them way over in the corner of town, there's no, the, the logic breaks down really quickly in terms of what you might do. But let's just think about, we have a couple of what we're, we're calling baseline alternatives. And I'll just describe what those are. They're, they're numbered now as E one and E seven in this, in this chart. And as part of that, is this, is this operating?
Only if you were plugged into, that's only, that's plugged into my laptop.
That's too bad. This is a. So, anyway, on the left-hand side, on the E one and the E seven, and you've got it in the charts in front of you, there are two ways of thinking about what you might do with schools. There is reasonable, reasonable people will raise the question, what if we just kind of fixed it up? What if we just kind of painted it up? I mean, it's working okay. Well, you actually do have to put money into these schools even for, to keep them operating and being able to let the school, the, the school department do a good job. And so, so it's not like you can just keep going where you're going. But another way to look at it, so that's E one, let's, let's make sure that they're, they're cleaned up and the things that are fixed and roofs are taken care of and where we need to rearrange spaces, let's do the best we can. Another way to think about this is that if you, if you were to try to get each one of the schools to meet the state standards, we do pretty significant improvements to each one of those schools. And that's the one that I was saying is, if you start to look at what's involved in that, it gets to be very expensive to take lots of little things and try to turn them into, into a fully improved schools. So, those are the sort of, the, the edges of, what do we do if we leave the, if we basically leave the allocation of the grades and the, and the schools and fix them?
Could you also, I think it's important for the committee to understand that there are a couple of regulations on the books with respect to handicap accessibility and fire safety, that if you invest a certain amount of money into the building, that it triggers the requirement to make the building fully accessible and to implement all the fire safety regulations, so. That E one, that, would that E one be just enough to get you to where you need to be without triggering that? So, we're not talking about, E one is not talking about making the investments that would make the building handicap accessible or compliant with all.
Well, I guess the thing is that, in our view, what the kind of recommendations we'd be making is that we think that your schools should be accessible.
Agreed.
Over time. And there's a certain investment that you can do to do that.
Would E one include that?
Yeah, we would include that.
We would, okay.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We would include that as a baseline representation. And you want to make sure that the schools, the life safety codes, the fire alarms and the flashing bells and all of those things, which are important if, if there's an emergency underway, you're going to want to continue to upgrade your schools. And that's a constant process because the regulations keep changing and going up. So, it's not unusual. It's almost, it's, it's typical that you'll, you'll bring a school up to speed with what the standards are, but you may have fallen behind in, in where you are in the changing standards. So, as a baseline improvement, we would be suggesting that you, you always keep your schools and that you always invest in your schools to keep that as, up to speed as you can. But from there, what, if, if it happens that you decide that you're going to be putting in a significant percentage, use thirty percent as triggering for whatever improvements, let's say that you're going to put a wing on a, a building and you're going to recreate cafeteria and the library and add some classrooms. Let's say that you're going to put a, a wing on a, a building and you're going to recreate cafeteria and the library and add some classrooms. And now you're renovating and adding the building for greater than thirty percent of the value. At that point, you have to redo, up to code, everything in the entire building. You, you know, it's sort of, you're triggering, you can't just do a little bit and a little bit. And once you do enough, you really have to reinvest in the whole building. So I think it's important that people understand, you can't just incrementally improve to get to, uh, a higher level and a full, complete school. It's a certain point, you might as well just admit the fact that we're, now, that doesn't mean that you tear the school down and rebuild it in the same place. It's not necessarily all that difficult to bring it up to speed. There's some good bones to some of these schools. You don't need to throw these things out, but, um, uh, uh, just because they need to be improved. Having said that, um, if we are to, um, begin thinking about any of the consolidation or reconsolidations that are going to occur, the amount of increased area that would be required for any one of these schools is going to trigger, in effect, a full upgrade of that school. Because as we said, you're sized with lots of little schools, lots of little boxes. And if you start to make them bigger by adding, um, some grades to them, you're going to be really rebuilding that school and putting a significant addition on top of it, okay? So, um, uh, so it makes it a little complicated when we think about what a minimal scenario is. And, uh, and if you are starting to, uh, think about reorganizing the grades and then decreasing the transition, you'll be triggering a real investment program. And you'll be up to standard, the state will want you to be up to standard, the codes will have to be up to standard, and you're going to have schools that are really good schools, so you're going to bang, that's what's going to happen. Does that make sense to everybody? Kind of triggers this threshold.
Just a question about E one, can, can that be an option? Can you then reconfigure the schools that you do have, K through five, to keep the same number? I mean, I'm, I'm kind of hearing what you're, I mean.
Yeah, the problem is, I'll give you an example. Let's take, uh, uh, one of the middle-sized schools, it's a three hundred, um, or maybe edging towards three hundred, North Intermediate School. I'm just picking one, right? Well, let's suppose we want to do K through five. Now you've got a, a building that's pretty small and you only have a couple of classrooms maybe for each grade. If you, if you think about what's happening there, you're, you're making all of these grades in a very small school as a, uh, as opposed to a school that has enough of each grade to be really balanced. Do you see?
Well, yeah, I mean, a lot of us grew up and a lot of other districts have two, two grades, two classes for each grade, right? So that you're with the, the same, half of the same kids in the following year. Right now, the kids are going to a new class each year and they'll have two kids that they were with last year, right? I'm just wondering if that's going to be one of the eight options that you would have, uh, not make, make the schools necessarily bigger.
The, the schools, uh, except with a possible exception of the larger schools, which are the Shawshine and the Woburn School. The schools are so, so small, right now, what's happening is you've got two or maybe three grades in there with the support facilities. If you tried to get all, uh, uh, five grades and K in them, the, it, it, uh, it, it doesn't balance very well at all. That's what we, what we're seeing. Is that a fair way to put it?
When these buildings were built, by and large, the kids would come to school, they'd sit in a class in rows very statically, they'd do gym class, when it was time to eat, they'd eat. Today, kids get to school, they're served breakfast in the same space that they're, you know, trying to have physical activity in. Um, the, the, the parameters are, are so different that each one of these schools would require a pretty substantial investment in addition for, um, for sped and sped support for, um, either a cafeteria or a gym to, to really be able to function properly in, in today's, um, education, uh, delivery, uh, needs, or to meet the, the delivery needs. So.
And particularly with the very small schools, the, the Boutwell and Wildwood, which have a capacity of about, uh, you know, a hundred and sixty, a hundred and eighty, you start to say, gee, I have maybe one and one-half. I mean, I really can only get one grade per, it's.
Right, and then it would be unbalanced because then you have one K through five that would be so different than another.
Exactly.
But they also lack, they're both, neither school has a gymnasium. And so if you're going to go to a K-five school, you can't have, not have a gymnasium for that.
And what these.
So then what happens, yeah, so what happens is, let's say that, well, we can't cram, you know, full grade sequence into the small schools. Well, so what do we do with the small schools? Uh, well, they can't really use them then. And then that hundred and sixty-five students, we put them in one, but you don't have room. There's no room for a hundred and sixty-five. There's no place, you know, there used to be this game, uh, that would be like numbers or you spell things. And there was one, there were little squares and you'd slide them around and one square was open, so you could always rearrange things. And the way your schools are, it's like there's no square open. So there's no place to put things unless you actually change where you're going.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Do you guys remember that game?
Yeah.
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 From a, from a scheduling perspective, I think, you know, uh, Stephen will haven't talked about that, but from a scheduling perspective, the situation that we have right now, um, is that you take the Shawshine and the Woburn Street School and there are six to seven, in the Woburn Street, the case of Woburn Street, one grade level that has eight classes per grade level. So you only really have four specials, right? Art, music, P.E. and health. Maybe you invent one technology, which sometimes we do. But you never get that grade level common planning time because you don't have enough specials. If you go the other direction, then you actually have inefficient staffing because you've got two grade levels, you know, two classes per grade level. And then you've got, like, you still have to service those, but then what do those folks do in that other time when they don't? So that, that's why I think they were talking about the four hundred to six hundred model as being this, uh, the, the sweet spot for efficient staffing.
Yeah, and what we're showing here are, uh, with the populations, uh, we have, we have the capacity, which is just regular classrooms. And then we also have the core spaces and, and that's the second level to really dig into. And, and the early childhood centers are really lacking in core spaces. They have one class that serves as their library, their art, uh, room and their music room simultaneously. And so if, once you start trying to put more function in that, it, it just explodes with need, with, with a huge additional needs to support the education.
As you're starting to invest in it, you're triggering a complete upgrade from a code standpoint, but also from a state standard standpoint. They want the schools to be good schools, which is why they, they pull you in that direction. So as soon as you start thinking about, is there a reorganization and bringing the transition, you realize that you've got, uh, uh, a significant reinvestment and choices about what schools would be used and which ones, uh, might, would not be, be used. And you would end up not using all of your schools. You've got lots of little schools, so if you start putting it together, uh, to be more complete programs, they begin, things begin to move around. And we understand that that has a lot of implication in terms of the way that people have seen the use of schools and what, what a neighborhood is and how that gets defined. So when we're putting, putting these alternatives up and I'm talking about them, then, uh, what I wanted to do is to, um, make sure that you understand that it's like, there are only certain numbers of ways that you could put this together that make sense. Some of them may not make any sense at all. But let me just walk through them, um, uh, quickly so that you can get a taste of what this is about. One of the things that you could do, E, that we call it E two, uh, Education Two, is consolidation into three elementary schools. So you say, okay, uh, we'll have three elementary schools and they're going to be, um, basically pre-K through, uh, we'll have a complete program, pre-K through five. We'll end up with three schools that, uh, you would have about five hundred and forty-six, that's the average right now. Ooh, that's between five and six hundred, we like that, schools. And you would pick which three schools that you would take and put significant additions and really redo them. And, uh, we thought a little bit about it and you have to think about, what's the size of the existing schools? You wouldn't want to do that with one of the smaller schools because that's expensive. Um, and you want to keep some geographic distribution that makes sense. So we said, well, maybe what you do is take the Shawshine, the North Intermediate.
And the Wildwood site.
And the Wildwood site and say, uh, maybe you construct a new school there. Because by the time you're done with Wildwood, uh, and you're doing a really significant school, the amount that you're going to save is really going to be small, such a small school, okay? So if we take a look at that then, uh, that's a kind of, um, option that, that we sort of understand could occur. Now, maybe that's not the right combination, but if you have three schools, you're really reinvesting in three places, which ones do you do? The ones that aren't being reinvested in become available for other things. And one of the things that we're, we're, we were going to be looking at is, and this will be true of other town facilities. If you're putting new town facilities someplace and you've got an empty building, what do you do with it? We've got to think about that. But let's not go there, let's get the right educational system first. We'll take care of what to do with empty buildings so that they're productive. Now, another way you could do it is to say, well, maybe we do this as four elementary schools, have a little bit more, uh, distribution, which gives you elementary schools that are maybe four hundred and ten, um, four hundred and ten school, uh, average students, rather. And so if you did that, well, maybe, uh, you keep, um, a North Intermediate School and Western Intermediate School and do some major additions. Really, uh, uh, the Shawshine, um, maybe because it's a pretty good-sized school, it's a relatively small addition. And then maybe the Wildwood Early Child Center, you, you construct or close and reorganize and make that your fourth school. Does that make sense? So is, is not, whether it's, uh, you, you understand what I'm sort of saying? So if you have four schools, they're still smaller and you can pick which four they are. But you're going to tend, we think, when you, if you did that, to use the North Intermediate School and the Western Intermediate School as anchor parts of it.
And then, um, and just, just quickly, anecdotally, with the, with the first few, um, it, it's kind of a keep the best and leave the rest kind of philosophy. Uh, and as we move down, you'll see that they start to balance out geographically a little bit better. So we're, we're thinking, uh, and, and discussing quite a bit about, uh, you know, transportation and, and busing and, and making sure that, uh, that factor, because we'll have less facilities, that the busing will need to, uh, be as efficient as possible as well with, with these new scenarios.
So, um, another way to take a look at this is that you have a couple of early childhood centers. And that, then there's a real logic to having early, uh, childhood centers that could be, uh, pre-K and K. And having those, there are a lot of schools, uh, school systems that do that. And, uh, maybe what you do is take your early childhood centers that you have now and fix them up and make them better. Uh, and then consolidate into two or three other schools for the, for the, the, the one through five. Again, you'll have to add some space, you'll use your bigger schools as a basis for that. So then if the students would have only one transition at the elementary school level, they come out of kindergarten and they go to elementary school. And, uh, so that's what that alternative looks at. And then you could pick which one or two that you might close. Another way to think about this though is, uh, uh, that you take a look at, um, uh, so we have, do you do two schools or, or, or three schools? The, the other way, and this is the last version of this, E eight, is that you consolidate, uh, you, that you use, uh, pre-K as a separate program in a sep- separate building. And everything else is K through five. So you have an early childhood center for the really young children. They have a special program and a school really set up for them. Once they move into the kindergarten level, and they, and that really is a different educational stage. It has really different educational needs. But then the idea of K through five being a continuous process in a school, there are so many programs that are set up that way, there's a logic to how that works. Then if you were to do that, maybe you have, again, looking at what you, what you've got going, uh, maybe you have three, um, schools, uh, that are, uh, K through five and one early childhood center. And you can take a look at which schools might make sense. But then you'd end up with four elementary, uh, four schools at the lower level, freeing up two school sites. And the question is, which ones would you pick to do that? So we've laid these out and we think these are, maybe we're missing one or two alternatives. And maybe some of these don't make sense. But, but you get to realize is that if you want to cut down on the transitions, that coming along with that means adding to some buildings and leaving some buildings aside so that you've got a more coherent, efficient and better, uh, educational facilities. Whatever you touch, as far as this goes, in terms of significant improvements, will be larger and it will be expensive, relatively speaking, because it's not just fixing up, it's really redoing them. So I don't know, with that, uh, just, well, open it up. I've, I've tried to explain this as best I can and, and Will's helped. But what do you think, uh, makes sense in terms of the way thinking about all this?
Just two things I wanted to offer. The map that you got, the circles, um, it does, I don't think they represent any specific geographic area. You just did.
It's a half-mile radius.
We just did a half-mile radius, just to get a feel for where they are.
So when we, when, when they talk about North, Wildwood and West, uh, sort of those schools, that's a half-mile. So if you expanded that out to two miles, two miles being the state mandated transportation radius for providing mandatory transportation, the idea is to maximize the coverage, if you will, so that you have, you minimize the number of students that are outside the two-mile radius from their neighborhood school, thereby minimizing transport, mandatory transportation to those buildings. So that's why you see that. I mean, we all agree that Wildwood in its current state, probably not the ideal school to renovate. But if you, that site itself, and it's a large site, being a good location, um, situationally. The other thing in terms of the preschool and having a standalone preschool that I would offer is that preschool right now is not, is not mandatory. Um, I don't think that's going to happen next year. I don't know if that's going to happen five years from now, but there's a big movement to have mandatory preschool in the future. Even if that doesn't happen, the fact of the matter is that our preschool right now is limited by the fact that we only open up those classrooms that aren't filled by the kindergarten students. But that those classrooms are, at the moment, revenue generating because we charge tuition for preschool. So to the extent that we are able to offer more preschool, it does bring revenue into Wilmington Public Schools because we're limited now because we only offer as many preschools as classrooms available once we fill kindergarten. Does that make sense?
Well, what are the numbers of pre-K students that we have now? Do we know that?
Oh, my pre-K people left, um.
I'd be more curious about.
It's relatively, it's, it's, we have, um, I think, one or two full-day integrated programs at each school. And then each school, I think, has one program that's half-day morning, half-day afternoon.
But also a factor in that, I think, is there's a lottery. So how many people are at, are in the lottery?
Yeah.
Right, no, it's based on a lottery, right.
But how many people are trying to get in, I guess, is the, is the.
Oh, I, I don't know that, I'm just, that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, I don't know it offhand, but it, there are a significant number of people on the waitlist and that did not get assignments to our preschool programs.
Mrs. Burns. I don't know if this is the cart before the horse, but if, um, anyone's going to ask it, it'll be me. My question, especially with considering the use of the Wildwood site, uh, anything other than maybe just an improvement. With regards to the, how we got the high school, I know that there are areas in town that had to be mitigated, um, back to green areas. And I, I believe there was a path in the Wildwood. I, I just didn't know, would that impact any of the other possible alternatives with regards to building new or on, on that site? That, I just, uh.
A wetlands mitigation, is there, are there?
Well, yeah, they had a, yeah, exactly, they had a, um.
I think, oh, I think our overall census, we have, we have, uh, put together, um, uh, some information on the sites and their surroundings.
And, uh, one of the things that we'll be doing is testing these different alternatives to see. There are various implications in terms of footprint, uh, but, um, generally speaking, you've got sites that aren't too tight that there, you could do. One thing is that the building footprints, even if you were to, uh, grow it thirty or forty percent, uh, fifty percent even, these, it's not that much of the site, it's really the parking that's the problem.
I was just going to speak to that, you've got to take that into consideration if you're thinking.
And the playfields, et cetera. And so it, it may be that, um, that we find when we actually investigate improving one of these, some of the options are not as realistic as we think. That's a very real possibility.
And right now, Wildwood has a substantial amount of, uh, you know, playground area and parking area. And, and there's, the site, you know, right now appears to have a, a pretty.
I also don't want to not, you need, if you're going to build that, that's the other, another third aspect that I'd be interested. They need outside, they need plenty of room to run.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And, you know, without having to, again, you know.
Yeah, and that's a.
Leave a huge footprint.
That'll be, be a, be a standard, again, as, as you really improve these schools. That'll be, be a, be a standard, again, as, as you really improve these schools, you really have to meet the recreational needs, the schoo- of the folks as well. They really have to be good schools, period.
And a lot of times, like, the high school, it's, it's something of a swap where you, you build on, you sacrifice for a couple of years, um, some play space to build, and then you remove the old building and, and you, you put, you know, put the new play space, uh, in and you have a, a temporary, you know, uh, condition for a time being. I did look and there are, uh, forty-three pre-K at Boutwell and forty-five in, uh, Wildwood.
Students.
Students, uh, and, and, uh, and part of that is, is actually an AM and PM program, so for one classroom, they're getting double the number of students per.
And I know, historically, I know back in the day, the waitlist could go anywhere from twenty to thirty additional families. Some have lo- lost interest when they didn't get drawn, so, but.
Mrs. Kane?
Thank you. Um, at the bottom of the chart, they have the current enrollment capacity, WPS and capacity, um, MSBA.
Yes.
Could you just explain that?
Yes, that's a, uh.
Sure.
This is part of a larger, uh, report that we did. So there are different ways of, of calculating what the capacity of the school is from a theoretical standpoint. Uh, and, uh, there are two different kinds of standards. One's your own standards, you have certain standards for how you, how big you'd like to have the school rooms and how many students, et cetera. And then there's the state standards, and they're a little bit different. And, uh, it becomes a kind of a technical matter. So if you think about, uh, about, well, just to pick the first one as an example, your current enrollment is a hundred and sixty-five. According to the kind of standards you've had, uh, you're overcrowded by five students. According to the state, they're saying, uh, you're, you're really overcrowded by quite a bit more, which is a way of saying that when you start to reinvest in, in, uh, in a, in a, in a school at that level, the state will be saying, you really should have a bigger school, looking at the capacity of it. Um, and as you go through the schools, some of them are much closer in alignment. Um, sometimes there's a little bit of a change back and forth. Um, and we try to track this to get a feel for, are the schools, uh, overcrowded or undercrowded? But it's a little bit hard to interpret, um, uh, except without getting into all of the detailed analysis back in behind it. As I said, if you, once we analyze this and we see, well, gee, this one's a little undercrowded, this one's a little overcrowded from a theoretical standpoint, but what does that really mean? That means this one library is a little bit bigger, this one, the cafeteria should be sm- could be smaller or in other things. If you add up all your systems, we, we were looking to say, is there some, you know, is there, there that space you can start sliding around? And basically, you're full. That's really what it's saying.
In, in the state, the MSBA, um, standard, um, Massachusetts School Building Authority is, uh, has a standard for, um, a square footage and a maximum number of students per, per that. So we take, we take that and then we divide their square footage by the number of students to come up with a square foot value per student, because not every building's created equally, and the buildings in the sixties, the rooms are much smaller. So we're applying the current requirement for space for a student, applying it to the smaller classrooms. So, um, if you look at the metrics, which are in the reports that are, I think, are online and are like four hundred and fifty pages of, of tons of data, uh, you'll see that the, the numbers wander a little bit and they might look a little low, and that's because we're applying the area that the students are supposed to have to a smaller space and saying, well, MSBA says you can fit twenty-four kids in there, but actually this room you have at, um, you know, at Woburn can only fit twenty-one kids. And so it's, it's full, at twenty-one kids.
Excuse me, just a question. So there, instead of saying there's going to, you know, like, per classroom, I remember as a kid, it used to be, like, you know, you could have twenty-two kids per classroom. Now they're going by the square footage of the actual classroom. So if, if the room was, say, you know, twenty by twenty, they, they, they would say, well, you can have twenty-five kids in there as opposed to another room. I mean, is there a standard size for classrooms these days or?
Oh, a kind of a, yeah. Yeah, there's, uh, for kindergarten, it's, um, um, about twelve hundred square feet. And then, and labs have their own criteria, regular classrooms are about nine hundred and fifty square feet. And, uh, they, they all have a little bit of a range and some wiggle room, but, uh, but you, uh, MSBA has a, a criteria that they say, uh, for different grade levels and, um, and Wilmington Public School has a criteria that's based more on a student teacher ratio, but we can apply that to the size of the class to, to also make sure that there's not, that, you know, that they're not more students than the ratio is.
One of the things that's a challenge, the way you have things set up now, is that there are typically little bumps in the population in the different age groups. The third graders and the fourth graders, fifth graders, even though it's fairly steady over time, there are these little bulges that occur. And if you're broken out as just little clusters of, say, two grades, well, you don't have a lot, if there's a little, you know, uh, mini boom in your population just for those two grades, and you're full, what do you do? Uh, you can't say, well, we're going to take, well, that school's going to, uh, have one extra class and we'll keep some of the second graders and the third grade here. You know, it doesn't, it re- whereas if you have, uh, schools where, uh, you can kind of, uh, uh, let those curves play through, because the whole number of students within that school, you just have more flexibility in a larger school, that's part of when we talk about efficiency. Um, if, another way to put it is that if, if you, if you had a school, a separate school for every single grade, it would be impossible to right-size your school system.
And just to use a specific example, for this year, we had a bubble that created the need for an additional classroom at the Shawshine Elementary School in grade three. We had to look at enrollments, so rather than just add another teacher, we looked at enrollments. So what ended up happening was a teacher from the Woburn Street transferred to the Shawshine to take that, so that position at the Shawsh- at the Woburn Street then needed to get filled. And there wasn't an additional position, we couldn't just hire somebody, so we ended up moving somebody from the north to the Woburn Street. That's disruptive, that's disruptive to the culture, that's disruptive to the teacher. If you had a K-five school, that teacher would move, be reassigned within the school, but would not be sort of uprooted from the culture of that school and move to a whole different school. And, and that's what we've been contending with over, probably for a lot, I mean, since I've been here, we've had a couple of occasions of having to move teachers, where if you have those K-five schools, you're still in your same school culture, you're just reassigned to a different grade level.
Mr. Todd?
And, and, and Mary, just to, you know, because I know that we've discussed in a previous, uh, meeting about having to redistrict, um, because there, there hasn't been s- space or for kids that we say, well, you go to the, the north as opposed to going to the intermediate or, yeah, the west or something like that.
Right, right, now we're facing that with the Boutwell and the Wildwood, we are maxed out at Wildwood, so if the enrollment continues to grow, we will need to re, um, reassign students to the Boutwell to balance out the class sizes.
Mr. Bjork, did you?
Yeah, so in the situations where you're, um, suggesting a major addition, I know that in the, in the past when we've looked at municipal buildings, um, in a number of scenarios, creating a major addition was more, less cost effective than a, a new building, especially where we're looking at small classrooms. Why are you, so are you suggesting that a major addition to those particular schools makes more sense than?
We think so. I mean, clearly, if it's going to be less money to build a new school, you'd do it. But, uh, uh, given the fact that you've got some pretty good sized schools and we start to rearrange them, so if you go, let's say that you decide to consolidate and depending upon the number of schools you have, if you've got a school that's at, at, at four hundred capacity now and you go to four hundred and fifty, eh, I'm going to guess, I mean, we, we are going to actually look at this, that's the next step. But I'm going to suggest that, uh, if you're adding fifty students to a school that you have now, it's probably not going to require it to be torn down.
And as, um, Ms. Burns had noted, you know, the, the maintenance has been really good. So, you know, Shawshine, brand new curtain walls, new roof, um, decent, decent accessibility in, in the interior, good spaces, good distribution of, of classrooms. Yes, they're smaller than the current standard, but they're, by and large, they're, you know, they're good. You know, with, with all, and brand new boilers, you know, for, for all of that, sometimes that, you know, you compare that to, to Wildwood, you're talking vastly different realities on whether an addition would be a better choice than, you know, than a new, a new building.
All that being said, though, we're not looking at this today. I mean, this is something, we're looking ten, fifteen years down the road, right?
Right.
Well, I think that's one of our questions for the town. Uh, it, it, it is certainly, uh, going to be a while. Uh, uh, this, this is a lot of investment and investment in a town that we're, um, relative to other communities. Your, your, your other municipal facilities are behind, I'll be frank, in terms of the quality and the investment in them. Uh, but I, 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 I really applaud, uh, there are a lot of towns that don't do facility plans. They just kind of, it's time to, holy smokes, the library just fell down, we better do something about it. That's a little bit of an exaggeration, but not much. Um, and I think that the, um, but as we take a look at it, what we've been encouraging, um, uh, your, your superintendent, the participants is, is if we're going to look at this over time, there's no easy solution, just looking at your buildings. You can keep moving, go, you'll go round and round in circles, there's no way of fitting everything together. So stop, let, let's, let's think about what kind of educational program do you want? What are the scale of the schools that you'd like to have? Um, how many transitions? Is it better to have a pre-K and then K through five? What would you like to have as a program? And then what we can do, as the architects and facility planners, is show you what we think the best combination is going to be. But we will be, throughout that process, and we're very alert in communities that when you propose to close a school, that there, there will probably be somebody who raises some, uh, some objections, um, for various reasons, maybe perfectly good. But there's no solution to creating a consolidation or different educational program that doesn't end up with at least one closed school someplace. There's no way to not break an egg and have an education program that's different. So, um, what we need your assistance in and what you'll be working on, uh, through the course of this facilities plan is really saying, what really is it that you'd like to have? And we'll try to figure out how to get there.
I'm sorry, just in my last question, oh, go on.
No, I thi- I mean, I think your point is a good one with respect to, and I know, um, you know, that, that, uh, Mrs. Broussard had the same concern, which is, we're, we're not, nobody's advocating that this is the way to go, per se. What we're saying is, the town invested a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to develop a facility master plan. And if we were to look at our facilities and decide what's the best way to make use of the resources we have available to us, what would that look like? And thankfully, um, you know, we have some, it's not just architects and engineers, it's also educational specialties to say, what is, it look like educationally? And so we have the ability, you have the ability to weigh in and say, you know, if, if the town was willing to invest, what would be the ideal investment to make, knowing that the town may not decide to make that investment, but our jobs, my job, your job, are to say, if we do go in that direction and we want to make those investments, what would be the soundest investments to make? Knowing that honestly, I mean, you know, I, I hope we're here for many, many years, but I think part of my role is to, if we go in this direction, I don't know that I'll ever see these, be here to see these facilities built, but I hope the plant succeeds and, and, and get the ball in motion, because I do think that a consolidation into a smaller number of elementary schools that are K-five or pre-K-five that have that sweet spot will enable the te- this community to take advantage of operational efficiencies, to, to provide better opportunities for, um, cross-grade level collaboration, um, to not necessarily save a huge amount with respect to staffing, but to provide the best education for students. And it, it, it may or may not happen, but I think that's what we're evaluating.
Yep.
Mr. Mueller?
So, we, we're showing these alternatives and we have to look at what investments we want to make. But I guess the question is, how do we know what the investment is on all the, on the alternatives? Is there an estimate, is there a, uh, on each one?
Well, that's what we're trying to figure out, but, because, um, we have, uh, we're looking at, um, twenty-six different facilities townwide, and I haven't calculated, but it's probably twelve thousand or so different combinations and permutations of all the different things you could do. And that, it gets to be at a certain point, um, uh, just, uh, really, uh, a challenge to keep up with it. We really want to make sure we're looking at alternatives that, that you all think would make sense. And, and, but the, what we will do then is physically check them and, and look at what the costs and benefits of the different scenarios are. Yeah, that's exactly what we're going to do.
So we, you would come back to us or at some point to, to the town with these alternatives with some, I guess, estimates or some?
Yep.
Well, they're looking to narrow the focus, so instead of having to evaluate eight alternatives, which would be beyond the, um, scope of what was budgeted for their services, what are the three or four that you feel are most worthy of them pursuing? And are there, uh, three or four that you would say, that doesn't really make a whole lot of sense? Let's jettison that, those at this stage, e- not even knowing what they would cost, because they just don't seem to make sense.
Right, these eight, these eight represent kind of a brainstorm.
Okay.
And then, and we're looking for.
Yeah.
Your feedback to say, E two, no way, yeah, this, that's, there's no way that that would benefit the town of Wilmington, you know, and then.
You'd better have four schools or three schools, if we're going to have elementary schools, probably having, that's the kind of thing. And we don't know what the answer is on that, but it's just to think that, that through as best we can. And I know we're put, you go on the spot, because it's a lot of stuff to try to get, get, and to even understand what the implications are. Whatever input we can have this evening is fine, but if there's informal, I mean, I think if it comes back through your superintendent so that you're, um, uh, and provide that, that, uh, so we get a sense of what makes sense. Now, there's nothing that will keep us from saying, for example, if we say, gee, having, uh, pre-K through, uh, five is a really interesting idea, let's look at three and see what happens. It's not that big a deal for us to come back if that doesn't play through well, but at least we have one clear scenario we can really look at. And from my perspective, the big mo- the big questions here, there, there are really three ways of doing this. You can have a pre-K through five pro- program, um, if you're going to change things, I should say. Because one of the things you can really look at is what, let's leave it the way it is and just keep, really fix it up. That's definitely one of the ones we're going to look at, uh, in different ways. But you could have several pre-K through, uh, five schools. You could separate the pre-K and K out and have a one through five program. Or you could have a pre- preschool, pre-K, and then do K through five. Those are the big picture moves. And, uh, uh, and is there any among those that you would say, really, if we had our choice, we, we really would like to do? Or one that it just doesn't, it doesn't match up with what we'd like to do? And I don't know what your sense is of those, but Amer- uh.
I would just, I mean, I would just offer, I know this is, you know, I'm sure you feel like, oh my gosh, we'll make this decision, but I would just offer to you that, um, from my perspective, if this was a direction, if we're going to look at efficiency and how to leverage that and based on my, our understanding of the schools, any scenario that involves improving the Wildwood or the Boutwell seems to be illogical. So, and I'm not even, I'm not even talking about E one, but I think having two early childhood centers in general for this community with respect to efficiency of operation doesn't make a lot of sense, especially if it means improving the Wildwood, which, I, you know, let alone the Boutwell, so, you know.
Having one pre-K or one pre, pre-K and K.
Or one pre-K.
Where you really put, put, put that all together and really create an experience, an excellent facility. And then, uh, that, that's a kind of a clear picture. And then try to figure out where the one through fives or K through fives are. Is that a way of understanding it?
I agree.
Well, or another way to, to maybe think of it is to just challenge yourself to think, if, if you were to make one decision to improve the school system, what would it be, or two decisions? Would it be to, you know, find a new home for the early childhood centers? Would it be to limit transitions? But, you know, and, and, and that might help in moving through this list. So for instance, E one and E seven, they're both the, the minimum work, where E one is really just addressing operations. E seven's addressing operations and programs, so, you know, you, but they're, but they're still not fundamentally dealing with the, you know, the, the facilities themselves.
And I think at some level, they're, that the, our consultants are going to need to quantify E one and E seven, because I think people are going to want to know, well, what if we didn't, what if we didn't? because I think people are gonna wanna know, well, what if we didn't, what if we didn't minimal or not necessary? And what if we, what if we kept the current, to, you know, to, kept the, what if we?
Yep.
Kept the structure, because we like the neighborhood school picture. But then the question becomes, if the ultimate goal is the educational research shows that minimizing transitions and having schools of a size between four hundred and six hundred, because they're efficient, they allow for the flexibility to adjust to the bubbles that happen and the fluctuations that happen in enrollment, so you're not disrupting a school culture by moving staff. You know, if those are the things that are priorities, then I guess that would sort of lean you towards E two, E three, E six, E eight versus sort of maintaining more of the sixth school. So, I think the feedback they're looking for is not that you necessarily say, because I think part of this is also the role of the committee, the Facility Master Plan Committee. But, you know, do we agree that the Wildwood and Botwell, are they really worthy of some significant investment to improve? Do we really want two early childhood centers? Early childhood centers, do we want to minimize transitions as a priority for the work of the future? Those are the kind of the high level questions that will help. So not necessarily you have to decide, you should pursue E two, E three, whatever, but what are your priorities as a board?
And I think Mary's choice of words, feedback versus decision, is right on the money, that we're looking for your thoughts, you know, at this time. So it's not like it's gonna be carved in stone.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, I guess my, my point is, you know, we fix up a school, how long is it gonna last? If we spend, say, two million on a school fixing it up, and it only lasts five years, and then it's no longer of use to us, you know, what's, I think, is there, I'm sure you guys must be thinking of that, like the, you know.
Yeah, any option wouldn't be a five-year option. It would be, any substantial improvement or upgrade would, would really. Typically, these, these projects are bonded, you know, so you want the work to outlive the bond. And so, you know, we're looking at twenty-plus year solutions generally.
Well, because you just, you have improvements and then, you know, which sounds like lipstick, kind of, like just fixing it up just to get it, get us through. But at what point do we just say, you know what, let's just tear down the schools and, you know, you know, like the Wildwood and the Botwell, because you can't build on top of them, because structurally, you know, the ground can't handle it, you know, it can go out so far. And it's at what point do you just say, you know what, let's just scrap it and just start fresh?
Well, I think that we wouldn't be recommending a horse expenditures of dollars. But if you've spent money correctly on an existing building, these buildings can be extended in life considerably. But, so I, we wouldn't be recommending anything where you would be just patching something up and having it go down. But here's another way to look at it. Suppose you decide that you have a ten and fifteen-year horizons for a couple of big investments. So now you've got a school, but it's really, you know, it really could use an upgrade. The cafeteria is really tired, and it's really not a good experience. The kids that go through that school for the next ten or fifteen years may very well deserve a better environment than they have today, as opposed to letting it run down and being in a terrible state of affairs at the very end. And you're gonna have to make those trade-off decisions. But if you know what you're gonna do with a school eventually, then you'll know, don't put in a new boiler, it's okay. We'll spend a little money, because it's inefficient. But make sure that that library is a pretty cool library for the kids that are there. Those are the kind of things that you'll be having to look at, once you know what the ultimate age of the building really is. You'll set up that life cycle. The state years ago did not allow communities to renovate buildings. And there was a really horrendously expensive world we were living in, where perfectly good buildings were being torn down to put up new schools. But the reality is that in many cases, these schools were substantially built and can be reconfigured, added to, and changed. And it's just, it's a decision that is, is an architectural investigation to figure it out. So we, we're just starting out by saying, we're not sure. We understand the Wildwood's a special case, but, but, but don't throw it out until you really know you have to. Yeah.
Okay, Mrs. Bonnich.
Can I just ask, what does renovation and reuse of current district program for education mean? It's next to E seven, and it's, E seven is the only one that has that reuse.
Oh, that was, that was a scenario where we thought, okay, if we take Wildwood, the site, which is geographically pretty strategic in town, and we create a completely new facility for a K five school there, we might be able to take advantage of that opportunity to actually include square footage to house the entire district administrative function as well.
Oh, administrative, okay.
Yeah, so it's.
Okay. So, I, I'm just gonna say what I, my opinion of this. I, I agree with Mary that there's no reasonable reason to improve those two schools, the Wildwood and the Botwell. So I like the, you know, I would say, one of the ones that closes that. However, I do think that just to do due diligence, that we do have to have some type of plan or look into some type of plan that doesn't close and build all these, you know, renovations and building new schools, because ultimately, that might never get voted. So I think we have, but I also think that we could combine E one and E seven, like have some type of combination of those two.
Right, and I'm just realizing that I misspoke. The renovation and reuse of current district program, it's because the sped department is housed at Wildwood.
Oh, okay.
So it was inclusive of that.
Okay.
So it wasn't, there were some other, other ideas we were tossing around, where if you're making major additions and renovations, you could take advantage of folding in to be able to get administration out of the Roman House. Bring IT, you know, everybody under, under one roof, basically.
But ultimately, I like E eight. I think that that ideally would be the best, if you're looking for.
If you were to start from scratch, that's another way, so looking at, if you're starting from scratch, that kind of a program might fit the town, is what you might be saying. And then, our job would be say, okay, given the schools and the sites that we have, how did you make that work? And maybe it looks like this, and maybe it's different. But that's a, that's a helpful kind of a direction to head.
Okay. I just wanted to check on the MSBA. Is this gonna, would this be, if we were going forward with this, say we're doing three or four schools, would we be applying to the MSBA?
Well, yeah.
And would it be competitive the way that the high school was, so that we'd have to make sure we had certain?
That's right.
Elements?
That's right, yeah.
But the money will be there, do you think?
I have no idea.
There's never a guarantee to that, but I think based on the, based on the condition of these, some of these schools and in the long-term outcomes, that we would be looking to gain, particularly around operational efficiency and educational improvement. I don't know, I think, you know, I think that the MSBA's program has, has for the last many years targeted schools who, that are really old. But our schools at this point are getting old, right? I mean, they're now, I think officially older than me, and that's old. And so, yeah, I think that, and given what's happening with them and their size and their ability to meet their educational planning requirements that MSBA has laid out. There's no guarantee, but absolutely, we would be applying for MSBA funding for any project that would happen.
And the other thing, oh, can I just finish one thing?
Please.
I know how you can't see that.
It's hard to see.
The other thing, when you said tonight, I was, I guess I was a little bit taken aback by the fact that we're looking at maybe a ten to twenty-year plan or something. I don't like going into it with that thought. I like going into it with the thought that we're looking at something as soon as we can get ready and get, and the town would be ready and the reimbursement money would be ready. So I just don't want us to go forward thinking, we're making decisions about, why bother? Because it's gonna be ten years from now, what does it matter what our decision is?
I, I think it's entirely up to the town, what timeframe you'd like to have. But what we're doing is we, because we're looking at the entire range of town facilities, we're being realistic about the fact that by the time you take all the facilities in town and bring them up to speed, it's gonna be a relatively long-term period. But we don't know which the pieces are gonna be or what the overall scope is gonna be, as far as that goes.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood you then, because I thought that you were meaning the schools that was gonna take ten to fifteen years.
No, I think, I mean, that's, it's a, it's a community conversation, right? So they're gonna, they have, and they will, when they do their report to the entire community, show the prioritization. I mean, there are some facilities that are, to their point, you know, not, not really about to fall into the ground. We don't have any of those, but I mean, there are, there are priorities. I mean, you know, the town hall and the Roman House are probably high up on the list of facilities that have, really don't match their functional requirements. Schools were doing okay, but if the community believes that education and the school facilities are a high priority based on what they present, then that, that may accelerate the timelines. But we also wanna be realistic, certainly I do, and sure, I'd, I'd love to see all these schools addressed in, you know, the next ten years, but the reality is, we have to prioritize as a community.
And it depends on the choices you make. In other words, some of the choices will be less expensive and some will be more expensive. And that has to be taken into account. We're saying that the starting point should be what kind of educational program you'd like to end up with eventually. But it may take a few steps to get there. And one of the variables that's not predictable is the amount of state funding and your ability to get it. So it may be your priority, but it's, but it may not be the state's priority at the same time. So we're trying to put all of that together, but in some ways, it's, Wilmington's in a pretty good, good situation. I was doing work recently in Sacramento, California, and they were talking about growth rates in the, in the, in the community I was working with. And they were saying, well, you're, we're looking at two or three percent growth rates. I'm saying, well, that's just like back home, you know, that's about how much we grow in a decade too. And they said, no, 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 we're talking about a year. So ten years, you're looking at twenty or thirty percent growth. Holy cow, it's a totally different kind of, you're changing slowly as a community. And so you can make choices, wise choices over time for where you're gonna be. We don't have an emergency on our hands. Sacramento has an emergency on their hands.
Mrs. Bonnich.
I have to just piggyback what Mrs. Bonnich said, that I think ideally, I do, I think transition, transitions are something we need to, are my biggest concern. Going to three schools and a separate pre-K, I think is ideal. As to where and how that'll look, I don't know. I do think though, in preliminarily, thinking about the concern with regards to the busing piece, I think granted, transportation will go up. And I'd be interested in, as we get closer to what that might look like for us with schools, what it will look like for transportation, because costs for that only have gone up year after year. But the cost savings on the back end of creating consolidating schools may save us in the long run in that, in that piece. So that's something that I'd be interested in seeing is, we progress, what the financial benefits are. And maybe that might come into play as to when it may be a reality as to where the buildings, you know, school buildings lie.
I'll just make a point, kind of, because I'm gonna piggyback on Mrs. Bonnich and Mrs. Burns, in that, again, I also like the idea of having one pre-K K and then the other three buildings be, whether we say K through five or one through five. But I'm looking at this map here, and then I have to factor in the busing issue. I don't know about the busing issue yet, but I like the idea of having the neighborhood schools. So if I look at the map, and Wilmington kind of reminds me of a mitten. We've got the Shaw, I'm gonna call it Shawsheen property, okay, real estate. I don't know what the building's gonna look like, but the real estate. We've got Shawsheen on the thumb. We've got the North property, and that's a pretty big piece of real estate up here where my, my fingers are.
Yeah, where North intermediate schools.
Yeah, and then on my, my heel of my hand, that, that property of the Wildwoods. We've got kind of the three parts of town represented. And I'm thinking real estate, again, not, not what the building looks like or what the existing building is or whether we band-aid it or renovate it. But I like that neighborhood feel to it.
It's, and distribution's gonna be really important, and that's why you can't just say, these buildings will be the lowest cost version, because the next thing you know, you could be all, have all your schools in one corner of town. It doesn't make sense.
I mean, the other, the other thing that's intriguing to me is that this, here's the superintendent's office, so call that property.
Yeah.
Right in the middle, and there are, if you could locate a preschool there, one consolidated preschool, you would not only take advantage of location, but the advantage to having the high school students who oftentimes do internships at the preschool and encourage their future careers in early childhood or education in particular, that, that would be a great place. And I don't know what that would look like, but that, to have that would be pretty neat as a, you know, educational experience for high school kids.
Yeah, I kinda like it. Any other comments, questions? I don't know about you, but my head's gonna explode.
My question, are you looking for a consensus or feedback tonight? Or is this something we can digest a little bit?
As much as we can, but I'm perfectly happy to, realizing that, you know, your head starts to spin when you think about all the things. If, if you want to take a little bit of time, get back to superintendent about what things start to emerge. And if I can, just a bit of advice that I'll repeat is that, if you get into the details of exactly this corner and how this works, if you just think big picture, what kind of, like geographic distribution is important? K, pre-K is a separate thing, makes more sense, or maybe it's pre-K and K makes sense. What are the principles behind which you think it sounds and feels right? Then we can go back into the details and give you, this is what that would mean relative to where you are today. One of the big questions is gonna be, holy smokes, are we looking at a hundred and fifty? I'm putting big numbers on the table, just to be exaggerating. But holy smokes, did we just wish for a hundred and fifty million dollar addition that we couldn't possibly do? Or, oh my gosh, we could do that for something that seems reasonable. But that's what we're trying to get back to you, to say, this is kind of the scale of the choices you have and how you'll be running with them, so that you can make good decisions. But I think what's good for the town in terms of its character and its identity, and what's good is a great educational structure, that's really what you should be thinking about, and we'll take care of the details.
And this is a two-way street too, in terms, sorry, in terms of, we're not just looking for, to be fed responses. If you have additional questions, to filter through, Mary, and then to us, we'd be happy to provide additional clarification too.
And when all is said and done and this report is done, it's, this is not like thou shalt do this and know of a thing. This is, if you're, if we wanna make sound investments of money, these, this is the direction we wanna go in. And if the town really decides that they wanna pursue a direction, there are many other studies and investments that need to be made with respect to what that actually looks like. So this is like ten thousand-foot view, if we wanna make the entire town look like what we want it to, not just school facilities, but town facilities. Here's the type of things that we should be looking at. So this is not marrying you to any option in the future.
And a good master plan always has embedded flexibility, because you don't know what the future's gonna have in store, but it provides the framework. So we're really trying to establish a framework and a vision that works for all twenty-six municipal buildings that we're looking at, including the schools.
Okay. Everybody good at this point?
Thank you so much, this is really helpful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This was, this was great. The next item on our agenda, the copy paper bid.
I'm gonna punt this one over to Mr. O'Gier.
I bet people could stay on the tube.
Okay, there we go.
Thank you. We went up to bid for copy papers, we do each year. We receive four bids.
We receive four bids, WB Mason, Contract Paper Group, Staples Advantage, and Veritiv. WB Mason came with the lowest bid per case of twenty-four dollars and sixteen cents, which is about three point two percent less per case than last year. So we've recommended motion to award the copy paper bid to WB Mason for the FY seventeen school year.
Any questions, comments on copy paper? No, thank you gentlemen. Okay, I'll ask for a, a motion to approve WB Mason. Mr. Mullis, seconded by Mrs. Bonish. All those in favor? Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is a quarterly report from the SEEM Collaborative.
Yes, and this is just informational. By statute, the SEEM Collaborative is required to provide a quarterly report. So we use the executive director's report to provide you that update. So that's totally informational.
Informational and along with the collaborative approved budget.
Yes, which is the night, the next item. And there's a lot of detail here, but I think the highlights are the most informative for you and on pages aren't numbered. But at about page, let's see there, the last page of the first handout that you received with respect to the budget is a sheet that says member district tuition impact, cost avoidance, tuition comparison. So this basically shows you for our students, the tuition, the cost avoidance from our students being enrolled in the SEEM versus if they were enrolled in other places. So it's demonstrating kind of the value of our participation in the SEEM Collaborative. And overall, the tuition rates that were proposed, we are confident we're able to absorb within the current, what we budgeted, so within what was budgeted.
That's good news, okay. Everybody, any questions, comments on, on SEEM? No, okay. Public comment? I think we lost our audience. That's okay. We had an audience tonight. That is an improvement in my book. So that is wonderful. That must have been. Must have been, okay. Other reports. And the first thing I wanted to make mention, I think all of us are aware that it's highly recommended that as public officials, school committee members, we use one email address for any communication related to school committee business. We've talked about this in the past, but recently the district has provided us with WPSK12.com email addresses. And I think there was a request made for us to start the transition and get prepared by the end of this month. I don't know how many of us are ready to do that yet or not. Mrs. Burns?
A quick question, is there a way of being able to get into that email address without? I've been accessing it via an email from Amanda to get into it. I didn't know if there was a quicker way I could either add it to my phone so I could just bring it up like that looking.
Yeah, Mr. Roberts taught me how to do it on my phone.
Oh, you should maybe show me.
I can send out the information he sent to me, the directions. And I, that Mr. Talbot can help us too, right? Okay. So wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that, first of all. And Amanda had sent us out a couple of weeks ago, our email list. Everybody okay with making a transition fairly quickly, like by June first? Or what do we think is reasonable? Okay, we have one that says it's reasonable. The part two of that is in the past, our contact information as school committee members was posted on the district's website. Right now, they've updated our list of, and Mr. Talbot's name has been added, but our contact information is not there. No email addresses or phone numbers. So I want to get a sense of, make sure everybody's comfortable now that we have district website, district website. District emails. Is everybody comfortable with having your name and your email address, your district email address listed there?
Yes.
Everybody good with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, everybody's good with that? The other thing that it occurred to me, you often see in the, the digital signature part of email addresses, a little bit of a legal disclaimer to recipients and also to the sender. Again, being that we're public officials, any emails that we can send is part of public record and public documentation. So I thought it might be helpful and protective of all to have a little, little bit of a legal disclaimer. I have it on my phone, I can't even see it now, my eyes are getting tired. But I did reach out to MASC for guidance on what that verbiage should be. I have passed it along to Mary. That will, that will be attached to those emails when we're ready to go with that.
You can do that from the background?
We can.
Yes, so everybody will just be.
Yeah, Mrs. Burns?
Um, any ideas to when are those addresses will be on the website? And is it just a standard disclaimer or is it, was it, had to be altered?
It's a standard one that says, you know, Secretary of State or the Attorney General has advised that, you know, these correspondence, email correspondence is public record, something to that effect.
Yep, it's, all email messages and attached content sent to and from this email account are public records unless qualified as an exception under the Massachusetts public record law. And there's a link. So does that seem, seem appropriate and comfortable and along with us? Awesome, okay. So that's, that's it on email addresses.
Does anyone else have a problem with Mr. Talbot? You know, that problem I had?
Oh, that, that's his personal email. Yeah, it's your most recent email.
Your, she's on Comcast, you're on Yahoo, they don't seem to like each other. Okay, so I'll just use the other. The WPSK12 should resolve that.
That should take care of the issue. Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Nod for all of them? Excellent, okay. I'm going to start with my right and work my way down further reports. And then next time I'll go left. Mr. Mullis, anything to share? Mrs. Kane?
We had the CPAC, the latest CPAC meeting. And I just want to tell you that there'll be representatives from the CPAC coming to go over what they've done this year. And they're, they're a very active group and they do some wonderful work. So they'll be here at the June eighth meeting.
Excellent, yeah.
You would say, okay. And the other thing was, I just wanted to mention that the middle school band, about thirty of them from the middle school came to the library last week and put on an hour concert. And the library thought there were five or ten of them coming and they were like, wow. But it was well attended, it was so much fun, and they've been invited to come again next year. So that collaboration is really nice. And that age group, they were, they were thrilled to be there.
That's wonderful.
So that, that was it, thank you.
All right, Mrs. Bonish, any reports? We had the facilities, so.
Yeah, we had the facilities done.
That's great, okay. Mr. Bjork?
I have nothing.
You have nothing. Mrs. Burns?
I am in the midst of going through the amendments to the state budget, which is before the Senate. I spoke to Mary just before meeting, just to, she's going to revise them. I want to type them all out, send them to you both. And then she'll prioritize what we need to target. And then the next meeting, I'll, I'll ask for the board's agreement of those topics and to meet with the state reps to start advocating on behalf of Wilmington, representing us on those bills.
One comment I'll make, I don't know if any of us had a chance to attend the selectmen's meeting on Monday. I was able to catch the tail end of it. And Mr. Hall was presenting to the selectmen a similar type of update, what he knew and, and where the state budget was and how it might affect us from a municipal side as well as a school. He did mention the school side.
I was just bringing in my dogs at the time. He was discussing that. And I know meetings, I believe, will start taking place next week at this, on the Senate floor.
Yeah, that's what he mentioned. And Chairman O'Connell had pledged her support to us as the school side and even offered for Mr. Hall and Mary to get together to see if there, there might be a way of us presenting a united front. So as opposed to an individual meeting, maybe strength in numbers and, and whatever that may look like. But I think that's a good, good opportunity there.
Particularly in regards to the kindergarten grant, which depending on which, it's all over the, the map. The, the governor's budget and the per pupil, the way he restructured the funding would result in about a thirty thousand dollar cut to what we currently receive. The House budget would be level funded, so we would get what we currently get. And the Senate Ways and Means has us cut to about twelve thousand dollars, which is about a hundred thousand dollar cut. So it's all over the map. It's going to be worked out in conference. But I think if we can all get together and, as they've offered, and lend our support as well as to other pieces of budget amendments that are important to us.
I think we're fortunate though to having a state rep who's actually sits on the Ways and Means Committee. So I think that is also a huge help with regards to any, about, Representative Sully's always been a very active advocate for us on the state floors, on the, on the House floor. So it can only benefit us, so that would be. So however you want to present it, we'll go from there and just let me know how we can proceed.
Sounds good, okay. Mr. Talbot? You're good, okay, all right. Did we cover all, all reports, I think? All right, great, I think, next dates, future meetings, et cetera. So tomorrow night, we've, oh, did you think?
Could I ask for some, forgive me, because I don't want to keep it slate going on. I could ask for some latitude for tonight regarding an educational piece regarding a part of Memorial Day. I just, and would be all right, just a, a brief, two second. My father-in-law, God bless him, ninety years old, is getting his high school diploma tonight. He never received it because he entered World War Two at the time. And so he was the class of nineteen forty-four, one of the last probably remaining recipients. But I just want to express my appreciation to the Everett schools, public school system in finally crossing one more thing off his bucket list, so.
That's very cool.
But, um, so I thank you very much and sorry to keep the.
I just realized I skipped over correspondence. I'm sorry.
And I do have something.
Oh, you do? Excellent.
Looks like a thank you note. Dear fellow school committee members and Mary, you took me completely by surprise last meeting when you presented me with the gavel and plaque. I cannot tell you how much your thoughtful gift meant to me. You continued the support that you gave me through the years of my chairmanship. I am truly grateful to you. I'll never forget your kindness. Thank you, Peggy.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Okay, future meeting dates. Tomorrow night, we will have the pleasure of all being together again for the Underclassmen Awards Night. Friday, those, your individual evaluations of Mary are due to me, okay? And the superintendent evaluation subcommittee will be getting together next week to compile those all together. And Mary mentioned the other two dates already. We've got a meeting coming up on June eighth and then I think our last meeting of the year on June twenty-second. Does that, anybody have any other dates to add to that? No? Guess what? I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Excellent, thank you all.